... on group and they have five minutes if they're representing group. And Sean or Melissa will normally let you know if that time is up, so just keep an eye on them. Appeal to decision pursuant to the provision of section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You advise to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. First of all, I'd like to get a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the last month's meeting minutes approved. Okay, now we have the consent agenda. Item on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And we also have the designation. We're going to do the designation first?
We do have that first, sorry about that.
No, no. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I did want to let you know too that our legal counsel has been called away with a family emergency, but she will be available by phone if we should need her.
Okay.
Thank you. The expansion of Eastwood is a small little area right at the intersection of Scott and Eastland Avenues. The impetus for this was that one of the buildings wanted to be rezoned, and so there was concern from the neighborhood that that rezoneing could encourage demolition. So several of the other neighbors agreed to be a part of the overlay expansion and they've met with the neighbors. This is just an example of some of the buildings that are there. 99 Scott Avenue, of course, is non-contributing. It's a recent construction. But the majority of the buildings are Queen Anne's, bungalows, and colonial revival styles, the same period and the same styles you already see in the existing overlay. So staff recommends approval of recommending to Metro Council that that expansion be increased. And did you have any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions to staff?
Is the neighborhood in favor of it?
They are. This was something that they asked for as a part of the rezoning.
Would anybody like to speak about it, or is there anyone in the audience that's interested to speak about this designation? Okay. Thank you. Now, are we voting on this? Okay. Closed public hearing. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the designation of Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Okay, so now we'll get to the consent agenda. I'll just repeat that items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything? Okay.
Before I begin, one of the items that was on the mailed agenda, 408 Broadway has been withdrawn altogether to be reheard next month. So the remaining 10 items on consent are 743 Benton Avenue. It's an application to enlarge an existing outbuilding. 1307 Second Avenue, it's for an addition in the Germantown Preservation Overlay. 1038 Chickamauga Avenue is construction of a new outbuilding. 910 Manila Avenue is partial demolition and construction of a new addition to a non-contributing house. 3706 Westbrook Avenue is construction of an addition, a rear addition. 318 Greenwood, Greenway Avenue is application of a rear addition to construct a rear addition. 1112 Forest Avenue is an application to construct an outbuilding with reduced setbacks. 1623 Fatherland Avenue is application to construct a new addition. 1301 Woodland Street, also an application to construct an addition with a reduced setback. And 2507 Essex Place is an application to construct a new addition, rear addition, and a new outbuilding. Staff has reviewed these cases and found them to meet their respective design guidelines and recommends approval. Some of them have conditions that were in the mailed staff recommendations and the applicants agree to all of those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Sean?
Sean, I can remember a couple of cases, particularly maybe last time, that rear yard setbacks came into play, and I saw a bunch of setbacks here. Are there any controversies in those setbacks?
No. We publicized those with, obviously on the agenda, with signs in the yards and with written notification to the adjacent property owners, and have heard no responses. I don't think I've heard positive or negative responses.
Okay, any other further questions? Okay, thanks Sean. Once again in public hearing, does anyone like to take any of these off of the consent agenda so that they can be heard? Okay, closed public hearing.
Move to adopt the consent agenda for submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is passed. Okay, the first one is 700 Broadway.
Okay, this was an addition for Hume Fog Magnet School on Broadway and Eighth Avenue. And in truth, it probably could have been on consent as well, but it is such a large addition and a little different than what you typically review. We thought it might be a good idea just to talk through it a little bit. And the applicant has some material samples for you as well. The smokestack that you see in the image at the top will remain. That wall that you see at the sidewalk will also remain. Excuse me, the smokestack will be removed, the wall will remain, and the addition will be in this general location. You see that wall on the right side, that will remain intact within the addition. So the addition will easily be removable in a future date if at some point they wanted to. The historic form and materials and look of the building would remain. The smokestack, it does need to be removed, but staff found that it wasn't a historic, character-defining feature. And they are adding another smokestack because it is a habitat for a bird. Smokestack will be removed, walls will remain. The upper level of the historic building will also still be evident. The addition will only go up to just above, between the upper level windows and the next level. Some more images of where the addition will be. And I'll let the applicant kind of run you through the design elements a little more. I'm sure they can explain it better than I can. But they have used sort of modern interpretations of historic elements of the historic building as a part of this. It'll be a gymnasium and it'll be structured parking. And if there are no questions for me, I'll invite the applicant up to tell you a little bit more about the design.
Can you just tell us what your summary is?
Yes, we recommend approval with conditions, the usual conditions about reviewing materials because we didn't have the samples at the time of the writing of the staff recommendation.
Thanks, Robyn. State your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Swinney with Klein Swinney Associates Architects at 22 Middleton Street in Nashville. We were actually given this project about 10 years ago, and I think at that time we worked with Mr. Walker and Ann Roberts, who's no longer with historical folks. And at that time, they told us they wanted something that would contrast with this building because there's no way in the world we could afford to design something that would work with the existing building. It's the oldest public high school in Nashville. So at that time, we, it's just been postponed and postponed, but anyway, at that time we designed a much more contemporary building, one that we thought would work with the old building, but that would definitely give you a contrast to it. So we did keep the existing wall, the beautiful wall there on Eighth Avenue. We're directly behind that wall with the new gym. And we, behind the wall, you started passing those materials around. The gray fiber cement material you see will be directly behind that wall. Of course, we'll clean that wall up a lot, so that'll lighten it up. And that fiber cement is kind of a dark gray, so that'll give a nice contrast. And the rest of the whole facade on Eighth Avenue will primarily be glass. What we passed around is a, it won't be quite as white as all that, but that's just a black and white image. But there is a night shot going around, but the, where you see the vertical panes of glass there, those will be the, what we call silk screen glass, which has about a small band of white and then a small band of clear, intermixed. And that's for energy savings and to cut down on glare and so forth. But a lot of the material on the north side, which is really facing a parking lot, and on the east side, which is also facing a parking lot, will be a combination of precast concrete, which will probably be a color very similar to the existing stone over at the school. Inside the gym, you will actually be looking directly at the existing walls that we're covering up, and we're just going to leave the existing stone exposed. So that'll all be available, I mean, you'll be able to see all of that. So we're really not losing anything of great interest. Behind the wall now, there is a old shop area, which is abandoned, has not been used in probably 50 years. And if you walk in there right now, you've got to wear rubber boots because it's full of water. So that will go away. The more northern portion of the building will actually go where the old classic cat was located, so it's kind of an interesting item there. Anything I can tell you about the school? Of course, the gymnasium will be a regulation high school gym. It will be sized where they can hold tournaments. It'll have a little over 1,275 occupants, I believe, to watch a basketball game. Any questions? Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, I have one.
Yes.
How close is the new addition coming to the, I guess would be the west, east-facing existing wall? How, that corridor, how far?
See, now you're talking about the, looking at that photograph we were looking at earlier, that wall. It comes right up against that wall.
So, but I thought I saw here that you had it called out as a corridor somewhere?
Yeah, well, the corridor is indeed an interior corridor. What's actually going to happen is that exterior wall on the east that's facing Eighth Avenue, there will be a, yeah, right there, there are some windows that will come out. You'll be able to stand where those windows were in that corridor and look into the gymnasium.
Okay. How wide is the corridor?
It's about 10 feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open public forum, if anyone would like to come and speak on, speak about this project. Okay, I'll close it. Discussion?
Move approval based on staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is 403 Chapel Avenue.
Moving right along. This is an application to construct a new house in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. A non-contributing structure at 403 Chapel Avenue was recently demolished with MHCC staff approval, and the owner wishes to construct a new one and one-half story house in its The new house will be, again, one and a half stories with a front gabled roof with a ridge height of 29 feet, the house which is comparable with the heights of surrounding buildings. The house would have a projecting upper story bay on the front and two wall dormers on each side. These features are not typical in the historic district, but otherwise the overall form is similar to that of a historic bungalow. It's 28 feet wide with a full width front porch, also a common feature. The rhythm in window, the rhythm of window openings, excuse me, is compatible with that of surrounding historic houses regularly spaced, open in solid space. But the proportions of the windows are not. Typically, first story openings are vertically oriented, meaning taller than they are wide, and they are taller than those, or at least the same size as those of the upper stories. With a revision to the upper story so that the front wall is flush with the first story wall and that the side dormer is set back two feet from the wall below, staff finds that the form would be compatible with surrounding historic houses and meet guidelines 2B, 1A, and B. Also, the window sizes should be revised to be more compatible, which would meet guideline 2B, 1G. The house will be oriented at an angle to the street, but this matches the orientation of surrounding context, so that's appropriate. More information is needed on the material of the siding, exterior trim, window, door casings, fascia, porch columns. The proportions are labeled as being a six inch reveal on the siding. Staff would typically require, or the commission typically requires a five inch reveal as a maximum. So with staff approving the final material selections to ensure that the building would meet the design guidelines, staff finds that it would meet the guidelines. The slope of the lot is also, slopes down from the street to the rear, which is not shown on the elevations. This would actually have the effect of lowering the height of the building and perhaps reducing the perceived scale, so that's a good thing. But corrected drawings should be submitted before a permit is issued. And here's just a artist's rendering of the new building. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill construction with the conditions that all materials that I specified and also exterior, or excuse me, paving, utility locations, HVAC, et cetera, that those be approved by staff, that the front bay not project from the primary wall, and that the side gables, the side dormers, excuse me, set in two feet from the walls below, that the window size be revised so that the first story windows are appropriate in proportion to the upper story windows, and that final drawing showing all changes be submitted before a permit is issued. With all those conditions being met, staff finds that the proposed infill would meet the design guidelines for new construction in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. You'll see, just one thing to add, you'll see on some of the plans in outbuilding. It's been discussed with the applicant, but it's not a part of the current application. I don't see the applicant here, but I can try to answer any questions.
You kind of said it, but which way is it sloping? It's sloping left or right, or are you looking at this rendering, I guess? Oh, maybe that's better.
Well, I'll go back to the, it actually, from street level, it drops down pretty sharply, maybe two or three feet, and then kind of just slopes down from there. So the rear foundation would be taller than the front. On this side elevation there, the right side, the grade drops away to the right.
Sean, the front bay you keep referring to, is that that piece that sticks out in the front there?
Yeah, it sticks out about three feet over the front porch.
Does it go all, drop all the way down, or is it just that over the porch?
It's just that front room that sticks out over it.
So that, you're going to push that back?
Sean, so with concerns of, in our past project reviews, where the sidewalks are, I mean, the curb cuts are to the back versus the front, I mean, I see in the front there, there's some curb cuts from the road. So there's an alley here, so in terms of a design, not, you know, to move that driveway from a side to the alley, you see where I'm going?
Yeah.
Trying to...
Yeah, there's alley access, and many of the houses on Chapel have front access, so there is an existing curb cut.
Okay.
That's something that we've, like I said, we've been talking to the applicant about plans. He submitted something and then sort of actually decided that they wanted to go smaller because they didn't want to take up too much of the yard. My anticipation is it's something that can be worked out, perhaps at a staff level, but of course it would come to the commission if you have concerns.
But because there are existing curb cuts there, it's allowed?
Discouraged, but it would be allowed if they reuse the existing condition.
Allowed either way.
I'll add a little more to that, unless this has changed more recently. The concern, I mean, if it's there, it's there, absolutely, it's allowed. The concern was that the addition was encroaching on the driveway, so it would end up just being really a front yard parking pad. It wouldn't be a driveway that would come back to the side of the house. Is that still the case?
Yes, and I think actually, I've had conversations with the applicant, who again, I don't see here. But because it's an angled lot, it has 50 feet of street frontage, but at the angle, the house takes up, you know, the lot is maybe only 40-some feet wide at the front of the house just because of that angle. So there might not even be room to keep the driveway with the current proposal. So that's something obviously that they'll have to consider. In that case, there would be no need for a driveway, it would have to be access from the rear.
So they, before they're, you submitted, they would then correct that showing, rather than the double driveway coming back, and it's showing two, but I'm assuming the other one is part of the property line.
Okay. Any further questions?
I have a couple of questions. Is there anything in the guidelines about the height of the foundation, height of the porch? This looks like it has one step up, or I guess two steps up, based on these inaccurate drawings, in terms of where the grade is. But do our guidelines speak to the height of the foundation, height of the porch? It feels a little squatty, and that may be also because of the height of the rack, the porch rack. I don't know.
It does, the guidelines do say that the foundation heights should be compatible by not contrasting with similar historic houses. I think those drawings show a one-foot foundation, which I think the typical is two feet. I don't think I went into detail in the staff recommendation, but sort of anticipating that it may actually get a little, might, it'll probably have at least two courses for a block. So it may end up being a little bit taller, but I thought with the, the grade dropping away from the street, that the actual elevation from the street won't change. The foundation will get taller, but by going down below the street level.
Hopefully.
We'll make sure.
And then the proportion of the windows, are there specific windows on the ground level that are of concern, or is it just on the front facade, that sort of triple window or the side?
Yeah, actually, one thing that we're, will require of the applicant is, these drawings have shading that might disguise what the height of the front elevation windows are. But on the right elevation, you can see that they're, I believe they're all, well, they're close to being square, although there is a paired set in the middle. Those are all, they're not sufficiently vertically oriented.
Right. Especially the one in the, the pair in the middle, is that right? If they turn that into a three, three windows that are vertical, is that, would that be, even though the overall opening is horizontal? It's more about the individual windows?
That, but then also to make that triple set and any other windows to be at least the same size, at least the same height as the upper story windows, which are, appear to be taller.
Ah, right, right.
So it's those two things in combination.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't say this when I was doing the reading, the presentation, but the applicant did say that they are all right with all the conditions that we've outlined. Obviously, the details of those would have to be worked out with a meeting face-to-face, I think is probably better than trying to get it all explained out over a phone call.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thanks Sean. Anyone in the public would like to speak on behalf of this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I'll move approve, staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next one on the agenda is 1511 Clayton Avenue.
1511 Clayton Avenue is an application to construct infill. The existing structure is a circa 1950 one-story structure that does not contribute to the character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In August, staff administratively issued a demolition permit for the structure. Here is the site plan, and you'll notice on the site plan that they're planning on retaining an existing garage and an existing covered deck. The new infill will meet all base zoning requirements for setbacks. The site plan indicates that the new infill will have a front setback similar to the existing structure, which is appropriate. Staff notes that if the existing covered deck is removed and reconstructed, the applicant must come back to the commission because the existing covered deck does not currently meet setbacks, but if they don't do anything to it, it's fine, but if they take it down or alter it, we'll need to look at it again and perhaps issue a setback reduction, and that would have to go back to the commission. Here is the front facade. The proposed infill is proposed to be two stories tall with a maximum height of 30 feet, four inches. By comparison, the majority of the houses on Clayton Avenue are one and one-half stories in between 30 and, I'm sorry, in between 20 and 30 feet in height. Along Belmont Boulevard and along the nearby side streets like Gale Lane and Cedar Avenue, there are several two and two-and-a-half story structures that are 30 feet and taller. Staff therefore finds that the house's height and scale meets the neighborhood context. The primary cladding material for the house will be cement fiberboard siding with a five-inch reveal. The foundation will be split-faced concrete block, and the roof will be asphalt shingles. Staff asks to approve the color of the shingle, as well as the windows and doors, and porch floor railing and column materials. The primary roof form will be a hipped roof with a slope of 612. Staff finds that this primary roof form is compatible with other roof forms in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. Here are the two side elevations. The foundation height is shown to be approximately two and a half blocks or two feet in height. The elevation drawings show the lot is flat, but the lot, in fact, slopes up towards the back of the lot. Staff therefore asks that revised drawings be submitted showing the slope of the site and the relative foundation height in order to ensure that the foundation height at the front and the overall height of the building is appropriate. The front elevation includes a centered front balcony that extends over the porch roof. The balcony is 10 feet wide and eight feet deep, which is larger than typical second-story balconies. Staff asks that a condition of approval be that the depth of the balcony be reduced by two feet so that it only extends six feet over the porch. The front facade also contains a dormer with a hipped roof, with a 612 slope. Staff asks that the dormer be pushed back so there's inside a minimum of two feet from the wall below. I think right now it's about at 18 inches, so we just want to have them shifted back another six inches or so. The primary windows are generally twice as tall as they are wide, thereby meeting the typical window proportions. There are no large expanses of wall space without a window or door opening, and staff asks that a condition of approval be that all double, triple, and quadruple window openings have a four-to-six, four-to-six inch mullion in between them. Here is the rear facade. The location of the HVAC unit and other utilities were not indicated on the plans, and staff asks that they be located on the rear or on the side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. And finally, here are some context photos. The photo on the top, you can see directly in the middle, is the site in question, 1511 Clayton, and then photographs, the one below that is looking to the left, and below that's looking to the right from the site. And here are context photos from across the street. The last photo on the bottom, the white structure, was a structure that the commission approved, I believe in 2011, and is also a two-story structure that is, I believe, about 28 or 29 feet in height. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. One, the applicant submit revised drawings showing the site slope and the true height of the foundation in the building. Two, the depth of the front balcony be reduced by two feet. Three, staff review and approve all final material choices. Four, the front dormer be inside a minimum of two feet from the wall below. Five, all double and triple window openings and quadruple window openings have a four-to-six inch mullion in between them. Six, HVAC and other utilities be placed on the rear of the facade or on the side beyond the midpoint of the house. And finally, seven, staff approve all new site features, including fencing and walkways. With these conditions, staff recommends approval of the project, and I believe the applicant is here and can answer any questions, but I'm happy to answer questions before then.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa?
Melissa, the front porch over the roof, is that... Melissa, the front porch over the roof, is that, is there another instance in this district where that is present or that we've approved in the past?
I'm not sure on new construction. I believe there's one on Belmont Boulevard, and I can't remember, I want to say it's actually where Crookwood hits Belmont, where you do see it. I mean, it's not a common feature, but you do see it in the district. But we felt that the balconies, when you usually do see them, aren't nearly as deep as eight feet, and that's why we are recommending it to be reduced in depth.
And the detail across the front, maybe the applicant can answer this, is that glass block, or is that like a little opening for a railing or?
You know, the applicant can probably better answer that question. It was my thought that that is kind of open, but they can answer that question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if it was called out in the drawings.
Melissa, the, the existing covered deck?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I have a picture of it in the, on the presentation, but it's in there.
It appeared to be, in the photograph, it appears to be detached from the existing house. Is that correct?
It's detached from the house itself, but I believe it's attached to an uncovered deck. So kind of, there's the house, which is attached to an uncovered deck, which is attached then to the covered deck.
But then this shows, this, the site plan shows that it would be actually attached to this house, or at least immediately adjacent, essentially attached, is that right?
That's, yeah, that's what it appears to be. Because it's existing, because they don't appear to be increasing the size of it, we didn't look at it that closely, but it's something we can look at.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak about the project? Just state your name and address. Names and addresses.
Andy Beck, BMB Construction. And what, and this is Brian McKee.
Brian McKee, 1511 Clayton.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
The, the first question, where you'd ask if that was glass blocks, I'm not sure who would ask that, but that's just railing. It's just a, just for looks, railing. You'd ask on the, on the little deck and the onen that's across there, we're actually going to take that first section out. We're going to cut about 10 feet off of that. It's in two sections, so we're going to take that first section off of there.
Okay.
I was trying to answer y'all's question.
Yeah, no, you did good.
I've got a quick, it's a constructability question, I guess, in terms of, if you, the staff's recommending that the porch, excuse me, that the second story, you know, porch off the front, narrow by two feet, which means as the, the roof will come up above the floor level, and so it kind of, you've got a little swimming pool up there, and my curiosity is how, that's a pretty specific, I guess, detail and a very specific detailed question, but I've seen and done projects where that becomes quite the problem. I just was curious how, how you might intend to resolve that.
Originally, it was going to be eight foot. We, of course, moved it back to six foot because they said two foot. Then they said two foot again, so we moved it back to four foot. So it's almost to the point of where we don't even know if it's going to be worth putting there. Because if you go back two foot again, you've got nothing. So as far as the top peak, it was, it was actually out 10 foot and protruded past the bottom deck, but we've took it back to four feet now. I think it's four feet on the last drawing. Yeah, it's four feet. So it's, the, the bottom part does come out two foot, and I think we'd all decided if we need to just take that off of the plan, we can take that off the plan and take it off the house.
That was a common window, likely.
More than likely, yeah.
I couldn't get it.
Yeah, we, we essentially wanted to keep it to, like I said, it had started out at eight foot.
That's, the drawings we have show eight feet.
Yeah. There should be some revisions. I think we emailed them to you. I got, I got some revisions that were six foot, took it to six foot, and then it was said again, so then we took it back to four foot.
Just so, I think it might be confusing.
So maybe, we might be confusing on them not getting the actual drawings.
We're okay, we're okay with a six foot, if you're okay with a six foot, so.
Yeah, we're great with a six foot.
We can work that out, though.
We're great with the six foot, and, and bringing that, the top part back to four foot, and having two foot passed it on the bottom.
The dormer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. So you're okay with all the conditions?
Oh, absolutely.
Assuming, yeah, six foot.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak about this project? We're seeing an enclosed public hearing, discussion? Motion?
I'll move approved staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. One thing for the record, on the overlay expansion, the application had read Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning, but underneath it, the application has Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation, so.
Thank you, yes, it was definitely Eastwood, on the staff recommendation.
And looks like we've also got a couple of things to deal with, recommended revisions to administrative review policy?
Yes, this is the policy that just helps us clarify what types of projects you are comfortable with the staff approving, and which types of projects absolutely need to come to the commission. And so, again, beefing this up a little bit just kind of helps applicants along, lets them get quick results, quick permits on some simple projects. So we're recommending that added to the administrative review, that staff could review the addition of solar panels, even if they're on the front or the sides, and side roof additions such as dormers and skylights. I know when we first started allowing for side dormers, there was a little bit of fear of what we would start to see, and how many we would start to see, and we've been doing that for about a year now, and there haven't been a lot of requests, and they've all been, you know, we've been able to get everybody to the size dormers that are appropriate for the scale of the building. So we thought maybe that was something we could add to administrative review as well.
But if they chose, sort of didn't like your recommendations, they can always?
Absolutely, they can always come to you, and if there's anything on the list that we normally can approve and we don't feel comfortable with it, we'll bring it to you as well.
And if you start seeing the dormers, you know, just a trend, you can?
Right.
Okay, do we need to make?
Devote, yes.
Okay.
I'll have a question. Robin, on the, I guess the changes to those items that need to be reviewed by a quorum of the commission, the, where it says front additions, it says except for non-contributing buildings. So that's totally new language?
No, it's, front additions has always been a part of administrat, or not always, but for however long, has always been a part of the administrative review that you see below. You'll see that that's not been added, that was already there. So this was just clarifying what's in administrative review.
All right, I see, sorry, yeah, I made a note here, does that need to say except for non-contributing buildings and solar panels? Just like the line above it says, except for solar panels?
It, it could.
Okay, but I guess maybe it's clarified below, the addition of solar panels, okay. Okay, that was my only question, thanks.
Okay, a motion to accept recommended revisions?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, next is revisions to the rules of order and procedure.
And this is something you've seen a couple of times, and we've added a couple more things to it. One is what you read at the beginning of the meeting, it's just clarifying the time that people have to speak. This doesn't change the way you've been doing it, it just clarifies it here. It's been on the agenda for years. It's been in our handbook, it's on our website, but having it in the rules of order and procedure just clarifies that. But at the same time, there may be instances or special meetings where you want to allow for less, more time, and so on page nine, you'll see another new addition that allows you to interpret these rules and change them as you need to. And then on page six is the clarification of accepting new information at the meeting, which again, we talked about a few months ago. And we just added a phrase, I believe, and legal looked at it, and this is what, what they've recommended. Again, this is just new information here at the meeting.
Do we have a public hearing on our own rules?
No, I don't think so. No question, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Regarding page six and the definition of new information, I want to be sure we're clear. Item six says the applicant or his representatives may not provide new information at the public hearing. And then it defines new information as information that's substantively inconsistent. Any material with respect with the application is submitted by the application deadline. So there's that time in between that I suppose you are often getting revisions because of the staff comments. And, so I'm not sure how, does this change how you handle those, if you get substantive changes two days before the hearing? It's obviously challenging for the staff to be able to respond to that.
We have two deadlines that you approved when we changed our deadline, and that's on our website and on the application. And one deadline is to get the application in, a complete application, and the second deadline is to get in any revisions that you have.
Okay, okay, great.
In that case, then, do we need to clarify that it's not really the application deadline, it's the deadline for revisions at the end of six that we're talking about?
No, we're not talking about revisions for number six, we're talking about information here at the meeting for you to review. So in other words, if someone comes in with material samples like they did today, that's not a change, that's just more information about what they're proposing. But if someone were to come in with completely new design, that we would not, you would not be expected, and we would not be expected to try to review that here at the hearing.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I think, I don't think the words say that. It says application deadline instead of the deadline for revisions. Because if we're comparing what we see today versus the application deadline, and they made a bunch of revisions, that could be substantively inconsistent, but still everyone's happy to look at it, and you vetted it, and you like it, but somehow it'd still be new information technically. And do we just need to change those last two words?
No, we will, we have not been receiving brand-new applications after the application deadline.
I'm saying, though, that couldn't revisions to the plans be substantively inconsistent?
Not, we would prefer not, for that not to happen. We're trying, this is what we're trying to do, is, is get complete applications by the deadline. There's always additional information we need, maybe the site plan's missing something like that, but, and that is what that second deadline is for. We're trying to prevent having substantive information after that. I mean, we work with people just as much as we can. In fact, you've probably noticed that, well, today, we had something on consent that was taken off because it's incomplete, because we're trying to work with people, we're trying to get their information in on time, but that doesn't always happen. So this is just a policy for here at the meeting, so that you and we are not trying to review something here at the meeting that's, that's brand-new.
So it almost sounds like we're accepting everything up to the, the second deadline, and, but we'll accept additional information, but not?
Yes.
New information?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
I also have a question. I know the conversations have been, or discussions has been, that the chair would decide if it was new information. You remember that, remember that discussion? Is that, there's still a?
There was some uncomfortableness, uncomfortableness with that, so we took that out.
Okay, just clarifying on that, thank you.
So who determines if, when, when they hand it to you to pass to us?
You.
Whether it's the entire commission?
The body, yes.
So we would vote on whether it's new information?
Pursuant to Amendment 13, we can determine whatever the heck we want to.
So if any of us is concerned, or if the staff is concerned that it's substantively different and the staff needs more time to review, then any of us can raise that, and we, I guess.
But you're, but you're going to be that gatekeeper, I mean, it's going to be, you're not, you know, I mean, you're going to take that role mostly, and if it comes to us, you guys have felt like it's, it meets, you know, it meets the standards.
Right, anything prior to the meeting, absolutely, we will do that, and, and if you want our advice during the meeting, we're happy to get it.
Yeah, I think that'd be better, make sure you guys fill it first before it comes in.
I guess what I'm concerned is the way that it reads, anything that is substantively, substantively inconsistent after the application deadlines, quote, new information, it cannot be introduced. But sometimes, like you said, it's helpful if they've made revisions, and then you work it out with them, and then you've got something you could recommend for approval.
We would, we would not count revisions as, most revisions as substantive. The whole point of that application, that initial application deadline, is that we've got a project that's pretty well fleshed out, that we can start working on and write the staff recommendation on.
Okay, so, okay, so you're looking at the, it's not material.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, with, with that, it sounds like they could walk in with revisions, present it to us, and they wouldn't be considered substantive changes, though they wouldn't, you all wouldn't have had time to?
That would be up to you to decide.
And I think we need to distinguish between substantive and material. They are substantive, but you're saying they're not material, so it's okay. Because it reads substantively inconsistent, any material respect. So I think it's sort of the materiality thing that we're looking at. If it's really important, it's new information, if it's minor stuff, it's not. Is that where we are?
I'm not really sure what you're saying, I apologize, but if, if it's something that helps to clarify the project, it would not be new information. Substantive would mean it's a whole, essentially a whole new application. It doesn't happen a lot, and this has been your policy for as long as I'm aware. We were just trying to clarify it for you here because there were some questions a few months ago.
Perhaps it should just simply say additional information per the approved plan.
That's where we started.
Well, it seems, it seems quite clear and simple that way to me. I mean, if you get, if you have your application in by the first deadline or the second, and you make it, and there are material samples like we saw tonight, that need, they're just simple additional information, then, then we can hear it. Otherwise, you miss the date and you wait another month. It seems quite simple.
I think this does give the flexibility of if there's still issues or conditions that the staff have put on their recommendation, that have, that an applicant may walk in, applicant may walk in with some slight modifications, for example, the windows earlier we talked about, maybe they come in with three windows instead of two, and they're proportional, and they're the right height, and, you know, we should allow that, I would think, just to, you know.
But wouldn't you, couldn't we consider that just a bit of added knowledge and, and be able to hear at that time?
That falls under non-substantive.
Right. And that's not new information. New information seems very clear on new information. I mean, that seems to be more supportive information.
Yes, yes, it's a better word than additional. But I mean, I agree, I mean, if they come in with a whole new plan, that's one thing, but if they're just trying to support their argument, that they've been dealing with staff on all this time, it's just, it's just added knowledge. I don't find it that complicated.
I think it's a matter of whether we're expressing it to the inclusion or the exclusion. You can say that new information is substantively inconsistent in material respect, or you can say additional information is substantively consistent in a minor respect. I mean, I think we're saying, all saying the same thing. I think it works.
Also, I think the gatekeeper thing is a little bit mixed message to me, because, you know, you being the gatekeeper, but yet it is, it is brought before the board to say you decide whether we should see it or not. So I'm a little mixed on that.
Before the meeting, we'll decide, at the meeting? Before the meeting, we'll decide, at the meeting, you'll decide.
Clear. We're feeling power.
Because I feel like if, I mean, if they feel like, it's no sense, you know, I mean, if they can stop something, then we could spend the whole meeting going, yeah, that's what I mean, like, let's, something that they're not sure about, or whatever, that comes to us, not just everything, and we'll spend the whole meeting figuring out substant, subs, subs, yes, whatever.
I think the thing to remember is that, the bottom line is, we will always try to work with the applicant, try to get them where they need to be, you know, if we reasonably can. I know there was a case last month where there were quite a number of recommendations, conditions, and the applicant did submit their plans, I think it was just a couple of days before the meeting. Sean had the opportunity to review it, saw that it met all of the conditions that we had, and so came in here and recommended approval. So we will do our very best, but this is just a clarification of the policy that you've had in place for some time.
When you say clarification, I think the issue is, it's not clear, I mean, there's just, it's almost too many words.
Okay.
Trying to clarify.
We can go, we can go back to what we had at the beginning.
I might can simplify this, maybe, perhaps. So what we're trying to clarify is that an applicant cannot come to the meeting and us hear what might be construed to be a new application or a new design.
Right.
But if an applicant is under a deadline, which we oftentimes are, and they're packing their bags at the last minute, we could hear some additional supportive information to the original approved design to be on the agenda.
Well, not originally approved design, because you haven't approved it yet, but the original application, and that's.
Application.
And that's what you do at every meeting, yes.
And I do think what you have works, and I think this is just a situation where hypotheticals are difficult, and we'll know when we see it, and we can make that call, but isn't the real purpose of this, so you have something in writing that you can show applicants to say, hey, you missed the application deadline, and you've got something to point at, so they don't think you're being arbitrary?
Not really, because the rules of order and procedure are really for you, not for applicants, they're for you and how you conduct your business. The applicants will see this information on the application, the deadlines are on the application, and that's, that's what they follow.
Okay.
Is that something we need to approve?
It is.
Okay, nothing else?
I'm, sorry, I'm, I guess I'm getting more comfortable with number six in terms of, it sounds like it's the rare occasion that someone really comes up, comes in here with a whole new design, and just clarifying that. Number five, I just want to be sure that I understand the intent of this. So there's two deadlines, they have a deadline for their application, and then there's comments back. If the application is incomplete on that first deadline, is it, do they have the opportunity to complete it by the second deadline?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that would be one of the staff's comments, that your application's incomplete, please submit by whatever date, a complete.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So they kind of blow their chance for making revisions if they're, potentially, if their application was incomplete?
So, so you're not going to comment on an incomplete application, you're not going to give them the standard review and comment on an incomplete application?
We will comment on everything that we have.
Okay, good.
Move through?
Second. I'll ask for a second.
Oh, second.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that anymore. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, training discussion.
Unfortunately, we are about a year behind on our training schedule. Our CLG status, our Certified Local Government status through the state requires annual training, and we did not, we were so busy, we didn't have a chance to get to it at the end of last year, and we've been trying to do it for several months this year, and we're fast running out of time. We, last year, and I think it was the year before, we tried a driving tour to look at some of the projects that have been approved. We tried that again this year, but only two commissioners showed up. So I wanted to check with you and see what, well, there were others that said they were going to be there that weren't there. So it is a lot to put together a tour, a lot of advanced planning, and we need to get a van from another department, and so what we wanted to find out is if there's another, what works best for you would be maybe four different hour-long training sessions before the commission meeting every year at different times, or did you like the driving tour, you want to continue to do that? Do you want to take another day, half a day on a Saturday, or what works best for you?
Everything but that ladder.
That idea, you're saying like we would meet maybe at 1:00 and do a training on, is that what you're saying about the one hour before?
We're open to whatever works best for all of you.
We all have to have four hours?
There's not a definitive number of hours, but we just have to do it every year, everybody has to be involved every year.
So it doesn't have to be four hours, so we could just do a one hour?
No, actually, I don't think one hour would get us to where we need to be.
But we could do, we could do more shorter sessions to achieve our goal.
Right.
Okay, I concur with Richard about Saturdays, however, the main reason I was not able to attend this year was because it was during the workday. Even if I didn't like it, I would be much more flexible on a Saturday than any other day of the week.
How about coming before, like about 1:00 before this meeting?
Over lunch would work, but, you know, if you, if you make obligations, you have to attend them, and so.
Well, I like, weekends are so tough, I like to, like, maybe an hour before this or lunch before this or something.
I second that.
Agreed.
Everybody's comfortable with that? Okay.
I think lunch would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Over lunch, I don't think they're, I don't think they're offering lunch.
Right, yeah.
I wish we could.
We can brown, we can brown bag it, yeah.
We'll get back to you.
And if you could also.
In the gallery during the meeting, so.
Okay.
If you could also clarify what the requirement would be in terms of our time, I mean, if we're expected to do it, we need to know what that obligation is, is it two hours, four hours?
They don't, they don't give a time, the state doesn't give a time.
Could you set a time?
We've, we're going on what we've done in the past, and knowing that, we sat and talked, I think, for two hours once with our legal representative one time, there were a lot of different questions, so I just don't think one hour is quite enough, but, you know, that's up to you, because that was just one topic that we.
We can maybe split it up into, you know, two meetings or something, I mean, if it's on, I just think if it's this Wednesday, we kind of already planned for it, so if, you know, two, three times a year, whatever, whatever you decide is best, we just come a little early.
And we really appreciate it, because we know you're already putting in an awful lot of time, and so appreciate that, you know, the time here, the time before the meetings to go through the packets, visit properties, we know this is a lot to ask, and several of you are on multiple commissions, which take up even more time, but we do feel like it's something we need to keep up with each year.
So would it be, because, you know, I think we're all limited in time, if, as Hunter said, if we knew we had three hours that we knew that we had to put down, then we would do that, you know, because.
We're negotiating. Four down the three. I was kind of going, I was going to say, maybe we have three different sessions from 12:30 to 2:00 before meetings, and everybody's just got to figure out how to make two of the three, and it gives a little bit of flexibility to people.
Yeah, there you go, three hours.
That's a good idea.
Just got to figure it out for yourself.
Do you like that?
Thank you.
Okay, okay, do I have to restate that? We're, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to somebody else, that we're gonna meet before this meeting at a certain time, at least three meetings, 12:30, potentially 12:30 to 1:30. So, good to.
Do we need to make a motion, or do we? I was thinking more like 12:30 to 2:00, so that if you make two of the three, you got your three hours.
Oh, I was just giving it a little bit of time before the actual meeting starts at 2:00, so the.
If we have to count that, then that's.
We might, we might could wrap up early or something.
Well, the one thing we also consider, need to consider is the staff's busy, too, and for them to go off to three separate sessions of information, because if we attended two out of three, so, I mean, respectful of what you all do, I know, I know, and I've been on the tours, they're great, I've also been on where we review slides and go over different kinds of issues and the way we handle them, is that considered the training as well?
That's some of it.
I mean, both of those require a lot of research and gathering of information, so we need to be respectful of your time as well.
Well, I appreciate that, but we're happy to do whatever works for you. My only concern is that the mentality of I only have to do two out of three means you miss all the good stuff in the third one, whatever that is, and it's.
Let's just do.
But, but, you know.
Yeah, let's just do the two, then, is that, we'll just do two.
No, three, three's great, I'm just saying, my hope is, as many will attend as possible, and there won't just be this mentality of I don't have to go to that one.
Okay, well, let's just say we have to make three, and then maybe cut it back down to one hour or something.
I get the gist of it.
If you had just told us we had to do three, we would all trust that you.
That's what we're trying to do, tell us what to do.
Yeah, okay.
And I, too, enjoyed the tour, the year that I was able to do it, maybe so you don't have to get a bus and all that, maybe some downtown walking, like, I could see, like signage, you know, let's talk about the signage issues related to the historic districts in downtown, or, you know, I don't know.
That's extra credit, maybe.
I like the, I really like the tour, more so.
I enjoyed the tour, too, but it, you know, it's just hard to balance that. I'd say we keep it at this, and then if we want to do something extra.
I was just saying, one of those could be, yeah, okay, whatever.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's everything.
Somebody just say, say yes.
No, I mean, say yes to that, I have to, we have to vote on it.
We don't.
We don't have to vote, oh, okay, 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 second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.